Prayer, and if you don't mind, continuing to stand for the pledge. Appreciate it.
Let us bow our heads. Most gracious Father, we are thankful for this council, and may it do much further uplifting of thy kingdom. Let us repeat the Lord's Prayer after me outside. Where I am. How did I mean? Thy kingdom came. Thy will be done. Amen. As it is in heaven. Give us this day. Our daily bread. As we forgive those who trespass against us. Who need us not. Into temptation. But deliver us. From evil. For thine is the kingdom. For thy love. And the glory. Forever. And ever. Amen.
Well done.
To the flag of the United States of America, the republic of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Council, time to review the minutes from the March 7th regular meeting. Are there any additions or deletions? Hearing none, seeing none, minutes are approved by acclamation. Move on to ordinances and resolutions. Adam made consideration of a resolution for the issuance of bonds for the Valdosta City Schools. Richard Hardy, our city manager, will present.
Thanks, Mayor. The Valdosta City School System is proceeding with the issuance of a City of Valdosta School System General Obligation Bond Series 2024A in the amount of $7,375,000. And the City of Valdosta School System General Obligation Bond Series 2024B in the principal amount of $21,930,000. The school system has requested the city adopt the attached resolution required for these bond issuance. This resolution provides for the assessment and collection of an annual tax in an amount sufficient to pay the principal and the interest on the debt. References made to other sources, which are expected to be available for such purposes, such as ESPOS. It is not anticipated that a tax will need to be levied to pay principal of and interest on the Series 2024 bonds. There is no financial impact on the City of Valdosta. Staff recommends to approve the resolution for the issuance of the bonds for the Valdosta School System.
Got so many questions for city manager? Seeing none, it's yours for action?
Make a motion to approve the request as presented.
Second. Got a motion at second, any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Motion carries. Gentlemen, thank you very much. Keep up the good work. Move on to item four, bids, contracts, agreements, and expenditures. And council, without objection, I'd like to do items A through F as a consent agenda right after the presentation.
Mayor, um... With the exception of E.
E?
With the exception of which one?
E.
E?
Items A, B, C, D, and F as a consent agenda without objection?
And G.
That should be G on a different presentation.
Okay.
Yeah, G on a different presentation. Hearing none, I'll now invite up Tiffany Edwards, purchasing agent, to present on the first item. We'll get through D and pause, how about that?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and City Manager. My name is Tiffany Edwards, the purchasing agent for the City of Valdosta. I'm here to present six bids to purchase vehicles and equipment for multiple departments. First one I'd like to present, bid number 202324. The Public Works Department needs to purchase a new crew cab, a 3,500 series truck, due to the age and serviceability of an existing truck. The truck is used for towing, rideaway equipment, and transporting personnel throughout the city. Three sealed bids were received on March 5th, 2024, with the lowest bid coming in, cash purchase, at $44,877. I recommend that the mayor and council approve the low bid of cash purchase in the amount of $44,877 and allow Public Works Department to proceed with purchase.
Tiffany, thank you, item D.
The Utilities Department needs to purchase a new regular cab, F-350 service truck, due to the age and serviceability of existing truck. The truck is used for water and sewer repairs throughout the city. That is bid number 212324. Three sealed bids were received on March 5th, 2024, with the low bid, Brandon Ford, coming in at $62,394. I recommend that mayor and council approve the low bid of Brandon Ford in the amount of $62,394 and allow the Utilities Department to proceed with this purchase.
Tiffany, thank you. Council, any questions on that item? Thank you, item C.
Bid number 252324. The Engineering Department needs to purchase a new crew cab, F-350 service truck, due to the age and serviceability of an existing truck. This truck is used for maintaining street signs and road markings throughout the city. Three sealed bids were received on March 5th, 2024, with the lowest bid coming in at $65,090 for Brandon Ford. I recommend the mayor and city council approve the low bid of Brandon Ford in the amount of $65,090 and allow the Engineering Department to proceed with this purchase.
Tiffany, thank you. Council, any questions on the latest item? If the item D?
Bid number 242324. The Fire Department needs to purchase a new crew cab, F-350 series truck, due to the age and serviceability of an existing truck. This truck is used for towing hazmat trailers, emergency rescue equipment, and transporting personnel throughout the city in southwest Georgia. One sealed bid was received on March 5th, 2024, and that was Landale Ford, coming in at $62,050.73. I recommend that the mayor and council approve the low bid of Landale Ford in the amount of $62,050.73 and allow the Fire Department to proceed with this purchase.
Council, any questions on the item D? Tiffany, we're gonna pause there. Items A through D, I'd like to handle as a consent agenda without objection. No objection, council, it's yours for action?
Mayor, make a motion to subdue the business as presented.
Second. Got a motion at second, any further comments?
Do we need to identify that as A through D on our agenda?
A, B, C, D.
Items A through D. All in favor, show of hands. Council, thank you. Tiffany, we'll move on to item E.
That is bid 222324. Finance for meter reading, community protection, and engineering departments need to purchase new crew cab, 1500 series trucks, due to the age and serviceability of their existing trucks. The trucks are used with completing the daily work responsibilities of each department. Three sealed bids were received on March 5th, 2024, with cash purchase coming in at a low bid, $127,161. I recommend that the mayor and council approve the low bid of cash purchase in the amount of $127,000... Excuse me, $127,161. And allow finance, meter reading, community protection, and engineering departments to proceed with the purchases.
Tiffany, here's where your key. Council, any questions?
Well, my question wouldn't be really much, pretty much to her. It would be to, I guess, the city manager, whoever. I know we had a conversation a while ago about some smaller vehicles, like for meter reading and, um... So, why are we requesting crew cab F-150s for these? Some of these, they can just be smaller vehicles? For most of these vehicles, you know, we're transporting individuals. So, you're gonna have more than one or two individuals that you're moving at any given point in time, and then include that equipment that they're transporting with them.
I am just gonna ask this question too with that, and I know they are in our budget and so forth and that. One question I would wanna ask is, what, uh... Are they kind of, are these vehicles that we are bidding on these right in particular? They've given us like a lot of problems. I know that the age of them, because of the age we wanna do, have some reliable vehicles. But are they kind of having a lot of problems with them? Or what kind of maintenance have they required?
You know, they get the, uh... We have a very solid fleet maintenance, um, manager and, uh... So, they maintain vehicles very well. They go through periodic inspections. However, if you look at the age of these vehicles that they're replacing, most of them are over 20 years old. So, to make sure that they're reliable and can get to the job sites every day, those vehicles have worn out, they've worn themselves out.
Okay, and also with that, uh... Looking at how things are getting very expensive and, you know, with the budgets and all and so forth, are there any kind of consideration for refurbished vehicles sometime? Are we thinking in that area with, since those are not like... Should I say vehicles that are heavy duty? Doing a lot of heavy duty work, but they're just more or less riding? Are we looking at that, thinking about that?
We have purchased refurbished vehicles, but we found, you know, somebody else's problem was somebody else's problem. So, you know, when we do that, what extent have they gone to completely refurbish those vehicles? So, you don't get the warranty that you get with the new vehicles. These vehicles that we get, we get the bottom line vehicles. They have the AC, they have the... They don't have the electric seats, they don't have the, um... All of the gadgets and stuff that comes with it. They're stripped down version of a work vehicle.
Why did you tell me that you wanna purchase this?
The ones that we're purchasing now. Right. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Council?
Well, I'm just gonna ask, you know, this really would be something to address during the budget approval process, 'cause these were all in our budget when we adopted it. And maybe, as we approach the next budget, that would be the time to kind of go, hey, do we need this vehicle for there, et cetera? That'd be really a good time to address that.
So, what you're saying is, when we get ready to talk about our budget, I need to do that then, I need to start telling them you can look at getting refurbished vehicles at that time?
That would, 'cause then it's gonna be put in the budget that way.
Okay, I just... I just wanna ask if we're consider... Is he considering doing that now? That's a consideration?
I mean, I, you know, you know, it's like the council approves whatever we're moving forward, but my recommendation would stay away from refurbished vehicles.
Thank you.
Council, any more questions?
Mayor, make a motion to approve the agenda item as presented.
Motion at a second, any further comments? All in favor, show of hands? Thank you, council. Tiffany, you can move on to item N.
Bid number 192324. The Engineering Department needs to purchase a new boom mower with mower, grapple, and ditch bucket attachments due to the age, serviceability, and single function capability in an existing boom mower. The new boom mower will get its enhanced capabilities will be used for maintaining vegetation growth, sediment removal, and debris extraction along shore mower ditches and retention ponds throughout the city. Two sealed bids were received on February 27th, 2024, with Reynolds warning, uh... Reynolds warning coming in with the lowest bid at $245,160.34. I recommend that mayor and council approve the low bid of Reynolds Roy in the amount of $245,160.34 and allow Engineering Department to proceed with this purchase.
Council, any questions for Tiffany on this item? Thank you, Tiffany, thank you. Council, it's yours for action?
Mayor, make a motion to approve the bid as stated.
Second. Motion at a second, any further comments? All in favor? Council, thank you, Tiffany, thank you. Well, now we move on to item 4G. Consideration of a bid for the Old Clydeville Road Wiener Project that no doubt a city engineer will present. And how you doing?
Good evening, Mayor, how's I'm doing well. I have our OCR TIA project. Um, as you're aware, these TIA projects are constructed, designed and constructed using funds acquired through the TIA or T-SPOS program. Um, so for this particular project, this is the widening of... I wanna make sure I get these ranges right. The widening of Old Clydeville Road from Gilhardman Industrial Boulevard to the bridge at Mud Creek, which is the city limits. Um, we had a good showing at the pre-bid meeting, and ultimately, we had two attendees for the actual bid meeting. Um, the low bid was Williams &amp; Son Construction at $5,289,085.85. Uh, we've got design and environmental permitting completed for this project. Um, bid to date is $484,010 for design and environmental permitting, as well as rideaway acquisition, easement acquisition, things of that nature. Um, we're rounding that number up to a presumed $500,000, because that's just what's billed to date. We believe we've got some outstanding billing for environmental and design, um, as well as some minor plan modifications that we're gonna have to make. And so, we wanted to give ourselves some cushion there. And so, we've applied an 8% contingency, which on a project of this magnitude amounts to $423,126.47, which we believe to be adequate. Um, that brings the total project budget up to $5,712,207.32, I believe. Um, and that is under, that plus design is under the TIA project budget threshold. I'm here to answer any questions. I know there's a lot of numbers, so...
Any questions for Ben on this one, council?
I just wanna ask, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I just wanna ask you a question. Now, this is the widening of the Clydeville Road. How long have we been kind of working on that project?
So, this project, the design commenced, this was the city's Band 1 project for TIA 2, or TIA, sorry. Um, and just so you're, for your general familiarity, the TIA projects are split up into three bands. So, Band 1, 2, and 3. So, those are the delivery bands. Um, and that basically means it's the delivery phases. So, delivery Band 1 projects for the TIA program are delivered at the front end for the front range of project delivery for that TIA program. Um, so this was one of our TIA 1 projects. Uh, it was designed commenced, um, before I arrived here. It was completed shortly after I got here. Um, it was realized once design was completed that there were some environmental resources present on the site, which, just to be above approach, we had those delineated, went through a stream buffer variance process, went through a wetland impact process. If you're familiar with the project site, there's a large open channel that drains from the Safft factory outfall. And the intent of the project was to pipe that large ditch, because it's severely incised and eroded. Um, we have, it's undercut, the banks are failing, and it began to threaten the road. And so, we had some concern over that. So, the intent was to pipe it, um, as part of this project. That was one of the primary directives of this project. Uh, so that's a super long answer, but the design was commenced before I got here and completed shortly after my arrival here. Um, and then the environmental permitting, uh, took the lion's share of last year. We got all the environmental permitting done at the beginning of this year, and then we advertised it, um, on Joe Tripoli Camera and in the newspaper, and we got a good showing, so...
Well, now, we wanna ask, I remember talking, we've been talking about that, and I thought one time it was something they had like TIA 1, TIA 2, or TIA 3. And they did, we were talking about doing that. So, we are at which band, you say it's Band 1, 2, and 3 this now?
Yes, so...
Which band we're at with that?
So, we're entering Band 2, right? So, we're gonna begin delivering Band 2 projects, and we're working on finalizing design on Band 3 projects. Um, and all of those TIA bands, the project bands, are listed on the G.TIA website. Um, and are readily accessible there. They've even got like a brief project summary, build to date. They've got a total project budget. Uh, and all of that stuff, G.TIA's very good about keeping all that stuff regularly updated. And so, you can see when, I guess, the projected deliveries are. And just for your information, that will include the Country Club project, the Barack Obama Boulevard widening project, um, and a number of other TIA projects. So, if you ever want any additional information, the best source is to go to the TIA project website.
Thank you.
And I can shoot you that link via email.
Okay, thank you.
Council, any other questions for Ben? Ben, two quick questions. Is this the project we're working in conjunction with the county? We meet them at a point, and then they finish the rest of the Clydeville widening project?
So, I'm not familiar, I'm not as familiar with the scope of work for the county's, I guess, range of the project. I know theirs is much more robust, because it's a longer structure road. So, for the most part, Old Clydeville Road is, well, St. Augustine turns into Old Clydeville Road. It's kind of a weird, uh, angle, name change thing. So, St. Augustine, south of Hill, uh, turns into Old Clydeville Road. And then runs for a point as a four-lane configuration to Gilhardman, and then it narrows to two lanes. So, we're widening the section, the two-lane section between Gilhardman, which is the, basically, the entrance for the Gilhardman Industrial Park, as well as the Lowe's Distribution Center. So, we're widening that section all the way to the bridge, which is the city limits line. From that point on, I believe it's four-lane configuration to a certain point.
All the way past the overpass?
Yeah, and then it narrows back down to two lanes. And I think the county's portion of the project is to widen Old Clydeville Road from two lanes to four lanes, or probably an open five-lane configuration all the way to Wild Adventure.
They postponed it on their last meeting, too.
Okay. So...
And is TIA, is TIA 2 also on that same TIA site? G.TIA site?
So, TIA 2 is, it's, let me see where we're at on that one. We've gone to the Regional Roundtable, um, for approval. We've gone through the public meeting process. Uh, and then the actual program itself, T-SPOS 2 or TIA 2, will go on the referendum this coming May. And the exact date escapes me. I can find that information out.
May 21st?
I can't remember when the election is. I think it's May 21st. Um, but it'll be on the referendum on May 21st, and fingers crossed, so...
But that shopping list of projects will go public soon, right?
That shopping, that list of projects is public already. Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Ben? Council, thank you, Ben, thank you.
Thank you.
Council, cheers for action?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the bid as presented.
Second.
Got a motion at a second, any further comments? Councils? All in favor, show of hands? Excellent, thank you, Eddie. That's why you get the big ones. Gonna move on to five local funding and requests. Consideration request for payment to emergency repairs to a gravity sewer main on River Street. Jason Barnes, Utility Director, to present. Jason, how you doing?
Good, good evening, Mayor, Council, how are y'all?
Good.
This is consideration request for payment to emergency repair to a gravity sewer main happening on River Street. On July 17th, 2023, James Warren Associates was contacted. They wanted to mobilize to establish and maintain the bypass for the gravity sewer main. And also, there had been, the sewer main had been compromised and severed due to the flooding and erosion of the creek bank. And then after a lengthy permitting process with EPD, you know, it takes a little time. Um, the project was completed on October 27th of '23. Little bit of scope of the work was basically digging up and replacing the existing 10-inch main. And we basically housed it inside an 18-inch steel casing to protect that. Um, and protecting the casing with number three red wrap stone along restoring the creek bank back to its original position, because that was before the erosion that caused the damage to occur in the first place. So, it's kind of 10-inch main into a 18-inch steel casing for that protection. Um, staff recommends to approve payment to James Warren Associates in the amount of $263,521.80 for the emergency repair work for River Street. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Council, any questions for Jason? Mr. Wilson, well done, thank you.
Thank you.
Council, cheers for action?
Mayor, make a motion to approve the request for payment.
Second. Motion at a second, any further comments? All in favor, show of hands? Council, thank you, Jason again, thank you. Item B, consideration of a request to approve the Providence Community Development Block grant of CDBG Annual Action Plan for fiscal year '24. It was in 75% of the 2023 allocation. Neater Riley, uh, Brooklyn neighborhood and Action District Director, how you doing?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Seeking approval for our 2024 CDBG projects. Um, as you know, HUD has not released the 2024 CDBG allocations for this upcoming fiscal year. However, when they do release the fund, the allocation amount, I have 45 days to submit an annual action plan with a 30-day coming period. So, I'm asking that we, you approve the projects that we've done before, program administration, housing, public service, and economic development. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Council, any questions for Neater? Neater, thank you.
Thank you.
Council, yours for action?
Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we approve the request for the CDBG action plan as stated.
Second. Motion at a second, any further comments? All in favor, show of hands? Council, thank you very much. And Neater, thank you. Well, now we move on to item 6, citizens to be heard. Reportant of the meeting, you asked me to come forth and state your name and address, so we may have it for the record. Policy requires you stay under three minutes, so that others have time to be heard. Please direct all comments to council as a whole. Do not attempt to engage individual members of council in debate. As council policy that follows through with you and your concern, most definitely, initially, will ask that any groups that want to address the council designate one spokesperson again, so that all can be heard. Having said that, are there any citizens wishing to be heard at this time?
Reverend Jerry Martin, Assistant Against Violence Minister. Uh, I'm here representing our board of directors and the Soul Patrol. And as you know, I've been working for a long time. I'm very much concerned about crime in our area, the murders, and things of this nature. But I do want you to go home, I don't wanna discuss it openly, but I have a package for you with some of our concerns, and I hope that you will read this, and I want you to take this with love. We can win if we work together. And y'all must know this, I don't play to lose. I play to win. And if you wanna join me and win it, then get on board. Pass these out to everybody. And those are not against you again. Thank you.
Reverend, thank you. Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time? Seeing none, we'll close the hook. I'll pause.
Yeah, I'm Reverend Marshall, 1744 Jimmy Carter Drive. And my big concern is the big increase in the water bill. We wanna know why. We gotta see, I mean, you know, the people at Water Place where you pay the water bill, you know, you can't blame them. They just take the payments. So, I'm coming here to find out if anyone knows why we're getting such a high water bill. My increase was $30. I talked to other people where it was as much as $100, $120 in one month's time.
Mr. Marshall, you'll wait around after the meeting here. Just a few minutes, we'll have somebody directly approach you on that, all right? Thank you, sir. Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time? Seeing none, we'll close out that portion of the meeting. Move on to the city manager's report. Richard Hardy, city manager, to present.
Thanks again, Mayor. Finishing up March, we have another community road cleanup. The meeting location is 1101 North Ashly Street. Uh, the cleanup areas will be East Mary Street from North Ashly to North Shook Street. This will take place on March 23rd from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Our next event is happening, first event in April, Painting the Park, 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Unitic Park Amphitheater.